I want three minutes.
Shut the door.
I'm worried. I know it's going to be a little time prior. There he is, there he is.
What have I done? I'm just down here.
We'll do prayer at first, thank you, Simon.
Shout ditto.
Good, quiet up. Where is he going?
Hello, what's up? Bob.
Where are we now? No, no.
I'm sitting here.
No, no.
Where am I, yeah?
Is everybody here? It is seven o'clock.
We're doing prayers all night.
Yeah, we're all doing that, yeah. We do prayers at the beginning, so just for those that don't know, if you don't want to be part of that, you're more than welcome to leave the room. Obviously, if you do, I'm probably going too soon, but I'm sure Catherine Rindell likes to lead us in prayers. So if everyone wants to stand for that, it's normal now to start with. Thank you.
Love a prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us all together here this evening. We ask you to guide us and help us, support us in all the things that we do for the residents and businesses of Stapleford. We also remember this time that the people who live on their own were not well, who do not have friends or family to visit. They must remember to knock on the door because someone may be that they do not know. And we ask you to guide each and every one of us to do that. Amen.
There's a list going round to... Oh, no, there isn't. You can see it. There is a list going round now. You all just want to sign the cheetos in every here. Thank you. Can I just introduce everyone to Sophie? This is the first time we've both sat down this end. So you can kind of shout your names out when you're on the speaker because Sophie's doing the minutes and everything. It isn't everything's there. Obviously, we're not gate by, so if that helps. Job done. So first item on the agenda, well, just say thank you to everyone for coming as well. First item on the agenda is apologies for absence. Do you have any notes from anyone here?
Catherine Dobbie.
Catherine Dobbie.
Yeah, Catherine Dobbie. And I'm glad you're being dressed as I am.
They have to be written.
I never, I never reception.
They have to come from the actual council and tell them so. Think if you sent out an email?
Didn't specify that. I was contacted, so I sent him the writing.
Is that everyone all right on that bit? Okay. So declarations of interest, if we do it how we've always done it before. So we can start with councillor council. Yeah, Brockborough councillors. Sam, I think you're going to go. You've got Jan. Who's next to you, Jan? See how we're doing.
No, it's Ali.
No, it's not Lily.
For the side, Aileen. Aileen. You've got, and who's on this side? Just John, John, John and myself. Obviously, if anything does come up on the agenda as we're going through it and you think that you've got an interest in it, please let us know and then we can put that down. Okay, right. So item three on the agenda, we've got appointment of new deputy leader. So I'm guessing here we go over to the leader of the council to do this bit. So Ella.
Yeah, so I've had a brief chat with Theresa. Because I know at the last meeting, nobody wanted to put themselves forward to be deputy leader. If obviously that's changed, we'll take nominations. But I'd like to nominate Theresa.
And I'll be standing there.
Any nominations?
We want to take a vote on that. So what you're voting on is for councillor Theresa Eden for deputy leader of Stapleford Town Council, so. You can vote yourself, yeah.
Are you picked?
Yeah. Thanks. Now that's everybody unanimous. Congratulations, deputy leader. You're a bit like Steve Gold, huh? All right, okay. So we've got it out.
I just think it's good to answer. It would give us a bit more... Is the word uniformless?
Green stuff.
Not sure. And obviously, that's our ideas. It might help us all to try and work together.
Don't look 21, will you?
Am I? Am I? I don't feel it yet. But it might help us, you know, fresh move, let's see how we're going there.
We voted for us, so we've got to change your mind now. So part of the vote, thank you. So item four on the agenda is appointments of committees. And we've got planning environment to elect members to this standing committee. And we've also got finance and general purpose to elect members to this standing committee. So again, I'll pass this over to Ella. Do you want yourself?
Yes, I think at the last town council meeting, they were already noted. I haven't looked at a few of these still off the top of my mind. There's not many of them. I think perhaps we need to reassess who is on them and call one for each of them. I would just like to remind people that when I start for leader, I'm not in any way, shape or form pretending I'm an experienced councillor. I start to be leader because I've got experience in strategy and planning and business management. So I will make mistakes like this. If at a meeting something's not right and it should be done another way, please tell me. Hopefully, we don't want things like this to be sort of dragging on. Obviously, I'll do my best. So yeah, if we want to start off then taking nominations for planning environment. Okay.
Five seconds, Simon.
Can you read that up? Yeah.
How are we doing this? Are we asking members to join these committees? Or then obviously, at the first meeting of each committee, they'll pick the chair and the vice chair?
Yes.
How are you picking how many councillors on these committees?
Okay, fair enough, yeah.
Is it one commission group or something like that?
How many would you love to have on the committee? I think there was a significant amount on there.
I asked David Grindell for advice on that one because he's been there a long time. I know he was on a lot of the committees, so he probably knows that to anybody there.
Yeah, I think you need seven.
Seven, okay.
That's minimum. You can have nine, but seven is normal. My advice would be that... My advice would be to ask councillors if they want to go which head up committees and take it from there. Then once a certain number have been picked, when the first meeting comes up, then the chair and deputy chair are voted on by the committee.
Okay, so basically, what you're saying is all each council say which one they'd rather be on? Or is that what you mean?
Yes, they say one they want to go, yeah.
Okay.
What do you have, Joe? Are you having one for each group or?
Well, I think if there's going to be between seven and nine, I should cover all groups anyway. I would thought.
Well, we've got independent, we've got green, you've got the damp, we've got conservative, we've got Labour. I didn't miss anything there, huh? Oh, so that's five members, isn't it? Is that enough or?
No, because the committees are still council meetings. So they still need to be current. And that means that they need to have at least a third of the full council. Otherwise, they don't stand up.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. So I don't know, you're going to argue that amongst yourselves? I'll put my name down to both of them. I'm just in independent, by all chance.
I'll say, no.
Okay, shall we just be around the table one at a time then?
Oh, it's not terribly interesting in here or?
I'll make up numbers if I need to because I'm busy on the board.
No, I get it, I make up, okay, okay.
Finance, new good planning, and the Brockford plan.
Yeah, but it's planning under environment, so I'm not getting... Sorry, I can't, I don't, I can't spell them all names. Tim Fox.
I'll go on planning environment.
Yeah. Simon, the planning environment. Theresa.
I'd like planning environment, please. But as on green, do I need to go on planning as a representative? Yeah, if you want to, you can. We'll work out on first, we'll just work out.
Jan? Oh, sorry, it's Aileen. Jane.
Jane.
Do you want to go on finance and general purposes?
I do.
Fine.
Jan?
I'm it.
Just me, you, they, you know, finance and general purposes, that's what you mean.
F and G P.
Hey. Sorry, I can't remember your name.
Um, Maron.
Yeah, who's this side, that? John? He's a lot, and I know which one he's going to pick.
Come on, man.
No, you don't have to be on one. Okay.
Yeah, because we're looking into doing something else, so I'll leave those two.
Who's in, take out, nobody, that wasn't my chair. Bob? I guess there's plenty on planning already. For that, I'll go on finance, just make a moment. Mr McGrath?
To be honest, mate, I've got a lot on as well. So if you need someone to make numbers up, it has to be finance and general purposes because everyone wants to be quite relaxed about that.
Why, I'm not, no, no.
I can't have a sermon.
I'm asking both or either.
And what's our leader saying? So is that making much right amount of numbers?
Yeah, so that's seven for finance and eight for planning. So if I just read out, if we do, which was the first on the agenda?
Planning.
Planning first. So nominations are Jess Hallam, Simon Frost, Theresa. I always want to say Theresa Green, I'm sorry. The irony is not that one. Hello, Matt, what do you think, what you have? Theresa Needen, I'm sorry. Joan Briggs, it's Briggs, isn't it? Yeah. Jungled, Effy Acton, Ella Kearney and Susan Patterson. And Richard McCray. So that's nine on planning. Okay, so can we have a vote all in favour?
You need to march over here.
Sorry. You want to do it, it's in there.
Five minutes.
Yeah, anyone against? Abstain?
Not one, no.
Right, so.
Finance and general purposes.
Yeah, finance and general purposes then. Dave Rindell, Theresa Needen, Aileen Atherton, Bob Brown, Ella Kearney, Richard McCray and Susan Patterson.
Thank you. Do you want to vote on that, see if everyone's all right with that one? Anyone for? So everyone, no? Against? Against? It started, I thought it was against, I abstained then. All right then, thank you all then. Item five, request made by any member of the public to address the council. I don't think I can tell anyone. Item six, minutes from previous meetings. And then it says here, six one, ratification of the minutes of 21st of June 2019. I'm assuming everyone's seen these because we would have been in that. Minutes of 28th of June, HS2, are currently available. That's being deferred until the next meeting on the September.
Basically, it's an email to questions to add to them to answer that we're still waiting for response from. So we've had the response for those, so they'll be added and they'll be ready for the next meeting.
Sorry, do you want to take? Sorry. I'd sent an email in about the moments for the last town council meeting. Jess Hallam was down and voting both ways on one of the motions and the, which is a bit weird. And so Jess assures me that that wasn't the case. Similarly, the numbers didn't add up. So it was like eight names when it should have been seven and the number next to it was nine. So the details were in the email, but that needs to be addressed.
So pending not being corrected, have you got that, yeah?
Yeah.
Is everyone happy with the minutes and whatnot for item seven? Yeah, there's shovels on that one. So to clear. Now, is everybody there? All right, item seven. Neighborhood plan steering group, update from meetings on 8th of July 2019, be given by councillor Theresa Needen, vice chair of the Neighborhood Plan Steering Group.
Right, we can go to speaker to this one. Okay, so we met with Ken actually on the 8th of July. If we just, we went through a bit of an update on the situation because obviously the examiner went with Brockstone on reducing the size of the town centre and allowing that housing provision on Coventry Lane, which are both things that we put in our name and that we're going to do. So we had a little bit of review of the neighborhood plan. And Ken said that, well, he speculated it will probably take about four to five months for planning applications for Coventry Lane to go to Brockstone. And he said if we wanted to ensure that we were able to put a design brief through for that site, then we had to complete our neighborhood plan within four to five months, which is very kind. I'll let Simon take some of this as well because he has had discussion with people. At that meeting, we then reviewed the housing policy because obviously there were extra 240 houses on Coventry Lane that we hadn't put in our plan. We then do the housing applications that we'd already agreed. So the group recommended to keep Hawkes Yards for housing. The group recommended to keep Sandy Cliff side if equipment's available for housing. And the group recommended to keep the Central Avenue side for housing. That's, yeah, so that's what we were. And then with the town centre at Vessel Lane, we basically decided to create a mixed-use regeneration area for the area of the town centre, which was not going to be included in the town centre anymore because it was a reduced size. And we talked about linking that up to Vessel Lane. We did discuss that we wanted support from the borough council councillors in getting this sorted, which we're at the moment. And Ken did ask about funding. There's a good enough, but I believe David Grindell's actually told me how much money there is available for the neighborhood plan. But then since that meeting, I know that Simon's been in touch, I've seen the borough councillors have been in touch with Brockstone to discuss the status of our neighbourhood plan. And there is some thought that we should go back to the drawing board and have been a week ago on that. So I'll let Simon take over on that point.
Have them under the neighborhood plan, it's 12 pages. That's it. If you look at other plans, there was a lot more detail in there. As a friend of mine, Mr Grindell, will turn around and say, there's no meat on the bones. And he's correct. I've spoken to Stephen Saunders and I've spoken to other councillors around this table. We had and we sat down and we thrashed out a lot of these ideas that were stripped out. We don't need that, we don't need this, we don't need that and we don't need this. What we do, and we need to go back, 75% of the plan is done. We just need to put back the things that's done and we need to relook at Vessel Lane and also the centre itself. We're looking, for example, at having two zones. One, I'm sure Vessel Lane is completely renewed that area within that. The second one is the Stapleford Centre itself and looking at redoing that and really working on those two plans, which we should have been doing all the way along. And we had a lot of information, and I'm quite annoyed about this, we all are, we were on the plan, that was just stripped out and thrown away. We should never have done it, but it was done. So we're going to go back, we're going to put it right and we're going to make sure that we have a plan that this council's proud of, I'm proud of, and every single person that worked on the neighborhood plan is proud of. So we can go forward, not just for us, but for our children and the next generation. And that's what it should have been all the way along. And I'm determined to put it right so that everybody can be proud of our neighborhood plan. So that's the plan of action. I'm meeting with Stephen Sanders and Theresa on Friday and we're going to have a quick chat about what's available, what ideas are coming up. There's another document coming out that he's going to share with me on Friday as well, which I'll bring into an emergency meeting in the neighborhood plan. That'll be called next, but I'll call it next week or get a date for it as soon as possible. And then we'll go forward.
Okay, thanks, thank you for that, both of you. I was just going to say, because we normally don't have meetings in August, so if we're going to call a meeting, it'll be after August because a lot of people will be on holidays throughout that month. I just thought that'd be fair on everybody that wants to call. But is anyone got any questions? I know that's what I'm going. Come on, man, you can do it first.
Yeah, so first of all, I'm not sure if we're going back to the drawing board or 75% of it's done. This is the first question.
The ideas, 75% of the ideas are there. The way it's been revised, the narrative that we, the narrative that's gone on the plan. The ideas are there, but the narrative's not.
Okay. And the second thing as well is that we've, a few of us have met with our students at the end and think we've discussed the purpose on how we can use the, you know, the advance page has to, should describe and incorporate that into obviously the neighborhood plan. But also, you know, how we can probably be a bit more imaginative with the neighborhood plan. And I don't want to criticize anybody because I've, you know, not been involved with it up until now. But obviously, I would like to get more involved with it. We're going to August and I don't agree with our students on much, to be honest. But I did agree with Ron on that, that it kind of just needs a bit more.
I mean, if I'm like, you know.
Yeah, so she mentioned to us about the, is it Toton and Chilwell? John? Yeah, Toton and Chilwell Neighborhood Plan and that's, you know, pretty significant. I know I've looked at yours with neighborhood plan as well. And I wonder if it's one of us in the first instance kind of looking over all the neighborhood plans that are kind of really, really good. And I think, is it Richard? What's the name, John? Richard Thompson? I'm going to maybe give him some point as well, perhaps we push.
Jan, that's, Jan.
Yes, I was at the meeting and I did give us some really good advice and spoke very well. The plan is, from my understanding, is not particularly good or acceptable. And so we need to go back to the drawing boards. The Toton and Chilwell group have spoken to me and would like to assist us. They can say, I'm an excellent plan. They would like to cooperate with us and bring it out to stride. And I think we've been very supportive to turn down this offer. And so hard as it is to accept criticism about the plan we saw and we've worked extremely hard and things like that, but this is a first for all of us. And so moving forward, I think we need to take our fights and we need to start again and...
Five seconds.
Right, I also know Richard. I've been asked into the first emergency meeting. I have asked him to help us with this already, I was just last week. I agree, we need to have a look at other plans. We need to see where we went wrong and we need to have a look at it. I don't mind saying, the plan itself is not fit for purpose as it currently stands. Without going into too much detail, because we'll be here all night, it's a case of like, advice was given wrongly and we trusted in that advice. We need to go forward, we need to put a line under that and get any help we can do to get this right, put the right, the plan put right, as generally said.
I completely agree with everything that Simon Theresa has said about. I think there's, I think we could probably say that none of us are fully happy with the neighborhood plan. What I want to share is I've been talking to people in my role as Chair of Johnson Economy on the Borough. There is a lot of support for a new Stapleford neighborhood plan from the Borough Council. Ruth Hyde is very for us, making our document not a lip service, but actually an aspirational document that will take Stapleford forward. Anna Superi said today that she is very supportive of us doing a new neighborhood plan and really maximizing on Stapleford's potential with regards to the generation of the HS2. Whether HS2 happens or not, what I know is that the Borough are going to be proceeding with the plans to do the development on the Toton site. Anyway, there is a need to have business and economy developed within the Borough. It's a really good way to balance in books, business and pay rates. Then we get services as residents. So that, irrespective of HS2, there will be a development that is significant and some of it falls, maybe not within the parish governmental boundaries of Stapleford, but the traditional boundary of Stapleford, most of it falls within, on, out of. And we have an opportunity as the only parish area, the only area with a parish or town council that is a major hub of HS2. Everywhere else is in unitary authority. We're talking about cities and huge councils. Toton falls within our area to control as a town council. That is a huge opportunity. And I really, really support the idea of going back to the drawing board and making our neighborhood plan something to really be proud of and something that we can hand down to our kids.
You said you're having a meeting next Friday, with Stephen and Stephen.
Stephen Saunders.
Right. Could that be open to anybody that wants to attend? Because obviously, a lot of people have got a lot of questions.
At the moment, I just set it up for myself and Theresa and then we're going to report straight back. And that was the idea, to get the information that was needed. And that's always had to go forward at the time.
Yes, so what information do you?
There's some more documents coming out, there's some more revisements that are coming out that give us some more ideas, what we can go forward on, what's available beforehand. I only had a brief chance to have a chat with him last night, about five or 10 minutes. And from what he's told, he has a lot of information, including funding streams and various pieces that we can get. And Tim's going to be there representing his Borough, not the town block. I want to get as much information as I can, print it out, send it off so everybody can have it. And then I've asked Tim to come along at the next emergency meeting, again representing the Borough, so he can bring forward all the information that Stephen brings. So everybody will have a chance to bring this up.
Couldn't we have a representative from each group there as well?
And all I was going to say is just quickly, when we set up these committees, the neighborhood plan committee and that, the agreement always was any big decisions that were made, and I think that is a big decision, the meetings taking place, are always brought to town council to be agreed. So the town, you know, the steering group could, because that's the first I'd heard of that part from the beginning. So I don't think it should be a decision that the full council make, who gets sent along to that meeting.
Yeah, I mean, it's the thing is if you're prepared to come along, then fine. I think Tim's got it.
Yeah, yeah, Tim and then Jan.
I was, this, the way I understand it, that that meeting is more of a getting to know you, handshake and session between planning on the Borough, Johnson Economy as the committee that's responsible for the end of the neighborhood plan process and bringing it actually into, sort of bringing it online, as it were. I don't think it's necessarily the time to say, right, here's one for all the town councillors to get involved in. I think it's there to say that the chair and the vice chair of that group get to make the introductory meeting, then report back. And I know for certain that Stefan will be there, will be very happy to do a report to either the full town council or the full neighborhood plan committee at a late day. I would say just give Simon Theresa the scope to have that introductory meeting, feel the way they're analyzing and come back with some ideas and present it to the group then. Otherwise, it would just muddy the waters. And I'd say they're both very capable, very competent. That's why they are chair and vice chair of that plan. Let them do that initial meeting on their own.
Jan?
And if it was over, sorry.
Jan?
Yeah, I'm just having meetings, the separate meetings. We've just said that we're going to have a meeting with Richard Hutchinson. and with, and children, sorry, the children, children, they're those. Who are not politicians, but they have actually put together a very sound plan and are happy to work with us as an alliance, so that we can incorporate all the ideas into one. These are, these are chaps, um, chapesters, who really know what they're talking about. And so far, I think, um, the arrows have been met, not deliberately, but it's uncharted water. You know, what's the point of having meetings here, there and everywhere, when we're already setting up a meeting where you all should come to? Where we can learn and move forward, but it's, it's absolutely...
John, do you want to...
...waste time, fine.
Yeah, well, first of all, I said from the very start on the neighbourhood plan, when Ken Mather came on board, um, what he suggested, um, was just a moment and no meeting at all. And, um, I've had many noratean versions about the way this should be going. It is right that a lot of time has been wasted and money. And if we're taking, continuing to take advice from our allies, as it still is at the moment, um, I'd be very careful, because at the moment, we seem to have been, um, put to a big hole, with the cap can't get out of it. Well, we can get out of it, that's definite, but what we need to do is decide, in fact, all this meat that we're looking for, um, that gets put on the board. Because if we don't, if, if we continue to listen to what Ken is telling us, we're gonna get nowhere. That's my opinion.
Simon. My answer is as follows, it will be voted out. If we're gonna have this meeting, then we're bringing to an emergency meeting, so I've asked the Toton, uh, guys, Richard, and also the R M L to come on to. From then forward, we'll put it to a vote for the full steering group if they wish to restart the plan. If they do, we will then restart the plan with what we've got, so we save time. We haven't wasted much time, first, if we literally had to go about square.
Simon, just, so, sorry for Tim, but it, the steering group can do that, obviously, because I'm on that as well. Steering, but then anything, because that is another major decision, it still has to come back to...
Yeah, I was just about to say that.
Yeah.
Once that's gone, then it'll come back to town council. And once the town council has agreed on that, then we will continue building up the, uh, neighbourhood plan with as much help as we can get. We're always open to anybody who's got help and advice to give.
Jan.
Well, obviously, obviously, everybody's feeling that, or we've been advised it, right? Like, obviously, like Jan says, we need to get this Toton and Chilwell people in. So I'm glad that you're eating there, because they seem to have done whatever it is right, no doubt. What I, what I can't understand is, when we started this, as David pointed out, with, what's his name, Ken Mather, obviously, we've been, we've been advised wrongly, haven't we? So it's nobody's blaming everyone else. I was led to believe, unless I'm wrong, that there was a time scale on your neighbourhood plan as well. So is there a time scale? I thought there was, Jim, am I right, Tim?
Can I answer that one?
Yeah, yeah, if you can answer it, please. Early days of neighbourhood plan, it was definitely okay, so can we beat the local plan part two to the post? Um, because the local plan part two, obviously, uh, is, is the planning authority, is from the planning authority. And so if we could get our planning, uh, from Stapleford in, in, in due time, then that would shape the Stapleford sections of the local plan part two. That has been missed, that, that bus was not caught, we weren't stopping time. So, um, so now that's not an issue. The, um, Milan said to me today, and I need to chase him up on exactly what he meant, because a lot was covered, that two years is a, is a good, um, is a good time for the, for the Borough to be able to see all of the neighbourhood plans for, for all of the areas, so the developing neighbourhood plans, to, uh, to get them, uh, formalised and ratified. Um, and I don't know why the two years, but I think it's to do with the, uh, the way planning and consultation works for the, uh, local plan part two and the core strategy part two. So, uh, so if it happens, if, if the neighbourhood plans all come out within that two years, then, uh, then it kind of, it kind of works, everything gels, and all of the plans will interlink in a way that's, um, not fighting each other, but actually being constructive and building on each other.
Right, so Tim, sorry, Jim, to clarify that, so if we know we've got two years, I mean, you might as well get, it's on the table now and get it sorted with the people, you know, with them on the ideas. I, I've gotta go with David, if this Ken Mather, and I don't know the gentleman, so I don't, I call him if he's not here, right? Has led us, where there's no meat and bones, I would think we were better off not going with it. That's me personally, but, uh, if he's took us down a path that all of a sudden we've gone with pan and it's, it, it's not up to scratch, it then makes the other people that's put a lot into it, who are not professional, I'm not being rude there, who are not professional, all their time and effort that they put in, it makes them look not very good. Well, I'm not very good. So, that's the way I think, but if we've got two years, we can sort it out, Tom.
Hello.
So just to, just to clarify on the experts, yeah, what, uh, what is your feeling on finding a new Toton? Okay, um, to be fair to Ken, he has done exactly what we asked him to do, but what he didn't really give us the advice that we needed. Um, so, he used to...
Good value, I think.
Good value, um, but yeah, I, I, twenty, twenty hindsight, I'm happy. Yeah, and I, I did say this before Toton and Chilwell came back, if I was starting again, with what I know now, I wouldn't have completed it. And I think that's... And, yeah, hindsight is a wonderful thing. Um, to be fair to him, I'd say he did exactly as he was instructed, and I'm not having to go for the people that they're not weird to the gentleman, because they're into it to him, that's what we got. So I'm happy to, if we've got two years to make it good, let's have two years to make it good.
So...
Um, I was just, again, I think it'd be better to, more people at the meeting to gather information rather than closed-door meetings, which I don't agree with really. I think we should have people there.
If I may, um, this is open to me. Uh, come, um, if it, if it makes you more comfortable, I've screwed myself in that meeting, and then it's only a meeting between a council officer and the, uh, the Chair and Vice Chair of the neighbourhood plan. I've wondered if it'd be helpful as Chair of Johnson Economy to be there, but it doesn't need to be. That was, that was only a courtesy, I'll, I'll screw myself in that meeting, rather than, rather than turn it into a, you know, turn it into a larger one, where I think a smaller, more intimate meeting, uh, between the, uh, between the Chair and Vice Chair and the planning officer, um, is actually really valuable, um, to, to, to kick off the process.
I think it's not about you, Tim, it's about gathering the information for myself, rather than having a second round. It's not about you being there and I don't want to, it's about being there first and gathering information, that's all.
David.
You see, I understand where everybody's coming from, uh, and, uh, I have some of the graphics. Um, we were led up to five in half, as everyone knows. The problem with what Ken told us, how long we had, he said that we'd have till about next Easter. Um, well, that's, that's not true, as we found out. But he seemed to be pushing us to get it done, and then he makes changes. Um, and I feel that he's not really helping us very much at all. It's, um, it doesn't need to be, the whole thing doesn't need to be rewritten, but it certainly needs to be a lot of information that we wish to put on it before it goes through to the full council.
Simon, we've got there in the end.
That's all right. I appreciate where everybody's coming from, I appreciate what everybody's saying, I really do. But this meeting's for Chair and Vice Chair, and then after that, I will bring it to everybody. Everybody will have their chance to say what they need to say, it is a fact-finding mission for me and Theresa. Nothing more, nothing less. I want to see what we can get from Brockstow to help us as a whole group of council get the best, best hand we can. There's no closed doors, it is just as simple as that. The main decision, the main questions will be the emergency meeting. I wanted to make that fully set up, so everybody could then sit there, Stefan's coming to that one, if you can ask him any question you want to there. What we're doing is just a purely fact-finding mission. And to go back on the meeting of Ken, yes, the decision on Ken will be at that meeting as well, whether we wish to continue to, uh, use him or set somebody else. The most important meeting for me is the emergency meeting. The one we've got on Friday is just fact-finding, for more information for me and Theresa, for funding, for anything like that we can bring in, and then you will get your say at the emergency meeting until we're all set up with a neighbourhood plan. I'm not doing anybody out of anything, I'm not hiding anything from anybody, that's all we're doing. That's as simple as it was, and as simple as we thought, which would be the quickest way to get the information out to everybody for the emergency meeting, and invite as many councillors that deal with it at Borough to come and talk to us, because, and of course, to take the Toton, uh, partners, because we need that information, we need that help. I agree with what Jan says, I agree with what the two ladies over there say, and then we've got two years to crack on and get this perfect.
Well, so two things we need to go across, um, to get the neighbourhood plan steering group is, is, is public, it's not actually real. Um, so it, uh, it might be an opportunity to see if anyone else is interested, because if we now have another two years to get, we might get other users. Uh, um, I was gonna say, it's happened to...
Look, Jim, I made good point there, it is, it is, it is, it's not, it, it, it made a good point, and, and, and what was told by Lady Anna, I mean Anna Suebury, is, is, is that's what it needs to be, because obviously, we, we have to weigh two heads, don't we?
Yeah.
Right, when it goes to the Borough, this, that and the other. So it needs to be, and I know what we're saying that you can't us now, but it needs to have an input, input from the public as well.
I think that's what we need. Just to go quickly back to yourself, it was so nice to see more people at that meeting, because, um, before the election, it was twinkling and twinkling and twinkling. We've got new ideas, we've got fresh people with new ideas, that couldn't stop us and say, "Anna, I think we've talked about this, what about that, what about this"? And we need this, and as many people as we can get around this table, or if need be, a bigger table, and so good, I welcome anybody to come to the steering group, anybody from Stapleford, because this is their plan.
Hmm, great job.
Yeah, and so, just, I guess in the interest of moving the meeting forward a little bit, can we just clarify then what the plan is? So I appreciate that it's maybe a bit unfair to ambush Stefan with loads of councillors, it wasn't expected. Um, so what I was gonna say is for Stefan to come into the emergency plan, which then you did say, so... So, um, you're gonna meet with Stefan on Friday?
Yeah.
When you've met with Stefan, are you gonna come with some kind of, are you gonna email us in some kind of...
Yes.
Yeah, and then, and then there'll be an emergency meeting?
Yeah.
Which Stefan will be invited to, and Richard and then so on.
Bob? Uh, sorry, I've got to run on the second board now, please, it is a point of order there, that's a whole new, let's have a look at this again, is that a, a major decision to take? And voting now? The, the way I've got it is the steering group's still going, so any decisions at the steering group have to come back to full council, you know, so... I'm not saying it's giving the next council meeting, but a council meeting coming on, it's just the way it is, it was agreeing on, full council have to agree on it, so... It's, it's got to be that any, any major decision that the, uh, neighbourhood plan steering group make does have to come back to this table like tonight, for everybody, everybody to vote on, so, does that help you answer that one? Okay, and then...
When do you see these plans?
Sorry, Jan.
It's, it's okay, I've been, um, Joe hasn't.
Oh, okay, come on then.
Oh, when am I able to see these plans, these old plans? Being a new person here, I can see them planned.
Yeah, the, there is a link to it on the town council website, oh yeah? It's like, I was...
Well, sorry, I've been born while I come straight forward.
I'm sure if, if you wanted to see a copy, I'm, I'm sure we can get a copy printed out, if that's what you need, or someone can email you with a link. Well, whatever's easy for you, we can make sure that happens.
Might say.
We've made sure.
And then we can have a meeting?
An emergency meeting after the meeting we've got on.
Why, why an emergency meeting?
Because we're changing drastically the plan. If everybody agrees, we're going to revisit a lot of the information we'd already put in, thrown out, okay? Uh, we've kept a lot of it, on one side, just on the stage side, but a half copy altogether, so that we could, if need be, look back at it. And so, we've got a lot of it sorted.
Is it better for people to have a look at the plans first, like myself, before you have an emergency?
Yes, the plan's all out there, um, there should be one also, if I'm right in thinking, here, and also reliable on the WOS, um, and they'll be there for anybody to have a look at.
Jan.
You'll see that I get them?
Yeah, yeah, we've, we've put it in the minutes as well, so it might be worth putting in the minutes a link as well to the website, so everybody, if you haven't seen it, get it.
The, the emergency meetings, Simon, maybe you can call. Um, and invite these different people, are they aware of that? Because, well, when I spoke to Richard, he's absolutely, he wasn't aware of it.
He was aware of it, he was very...
Anyway, so if he's probably won't get to come, which is, uh, I see him as being a vital part of what we're trying to do, and if we're not going to take advice from people who have done pretty, uh, you know, a pretty successful job, then it's, I, you know, I don't see the emergency, I'm sorry, it, it's not...
The emergency itself, as we, Richard pointed out, was a case of like, there'll be no meeting involved, because a lot of people are away, it could be in September, at the closest possible time. At that point, everybody who's invited will have an official letter written inviting them to the meeting, yeah, meeting.
But that, that's, sorry, I'm sorry, I'm on your line, through your line. That, that's not really an emergency meeting, is it? An emergency meeting, to me, is in a couple of days, you know, you're now, tomorrow's an emergency.
I cannot get anything...
So perhaps you haven't, you know, you haven't put it in the right context. It's an important meeting that obviously we need to attend, and it needs to be done today. But it's not until that comes, it's not an emergency.
Perhaps we should just call it next door now, isn't it? And then, you know, it's just the normal meeting, instead of an emergency, because that will sound like next three years, so... Are we all, are we all good on that, or not? Are we all alright?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, I, I understand that Simon doesn't think...
We've all got our picture up in the... I, I didn't think that that worked, someone just told me, so they, yeah, we have our picture. Oh, is that, is that it on that I took my seven, are we all done on the neighbourhood plan?
Yeah, I'm, I've done.
Yeah. Okay, so we, we look forward to hearing from Simon and from Theresa, and thank you for doing that for us, I suppose that's the best one. Okay, right, I'd say we've got an update from the leader, so this is a new one, isn't it?
Uh, yeah, well, I just thought it'd be a good agenda, I can really, you can all kind of hear about what, what has been going on between meetings, because I know there's a lot of stuff, but, you know, I get emails saying what's going on with this and what's going on with that. I think it'd just be useful for you to all have an update at the meeting, and if there's anything that needs updating in between, um, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll do something sort of halfway through between meetings as well, um, on email. Um, so you should all have, um, just a copy of what I've written, so you can look at it again later. Uh, so first I want to talk about is recruitment, uh, this is all just an update, anyone wants to ask any questions at the end, please, please do, pray. Um, so, uh, yeah, the town park vacancy has been advertised, and the deadline for that is Friday and nine o'clock. Uh, they've advertised via a number of sources, including our own website, the Job Centre, the Sealy Library. That was at a cost of seventy-five pounds for that, uh, which we decided at, um, HR Committee to go with. Um, appreciate that, um, we didn't bring it to council, it's not a huge sort of warning, and obviously we have to make sure that, um, it, it sort of went out as soon as possible. Um, Brockstow Borough Council have also advertised it for free of charge on their website. Um, so, yeah, thanks for that, that was Bob's idea. Um, and I've also actually managed to create advertising for free on Indeed, which we did talk about, um, David's been at Jobs quite a lot, but they do it for free, so... Um, the job spec, the job description and person spec were all agreed by the HR Committee on sixteenth of July, um, as well as the selection panel, um, who will shortlist an interview for the position. Um, so we've, that, that will be, um, Jan, Bob and myself. Um, so we've, that, that will be, um, Jan, Bob and myself. Um, we've also opted for anonymous shortlisting, um, given that we're likely to receive a lot of local applications. Um, we felt that that was the fairest way to do it. Um. So yeah, depending on the number of applications we receive, we will possibly start shortlisting the week of the fifth of August. Um, and interviews will take place the week of the nineteenth. We're looking to have somebody in post before, uh, the end of September. Um, obviously we have to take into account that the via DBS check that will have to come back, um, and so on. So it might be a few weeks after we've appointed that they can actually start. Uh, so I do apologise, I've noticed I've left an ellipses there. Um, to date, I can confirm we've received about five applications. Um, and I don't think that's too bad considering it only went out last Friday. Um, and I would imagine that we'll get a lot more the, the week of the deadline. Um, yes, so I have elected to take three weeks off work, um, at the moment, obviously while we haven't got a town park, just to make sure that I'm there for Sophie, um, I'm hoping that I can do that, um, because I'm self-employed. Um, I, uh, yeah, so I, I will be here most days in my capacity as leader, um, and just to support Sophie. Sophie has taken on quite a lot of work at the, um, town park, uh, non-adjunct, so I think we should all just, um, thank Sophie for that, because she's been working very hard, um, given that she's, um, only been doing ten hours a week, she's very kindly agreed to work, um, for twenty hours a week of admin, um, until, until we have someone in post, um, for the town park. Um, talking of the office and admin, there's just a couple of things, uh, there to update on. So the photocopier lease, um, has been reduced, and we're sending the attachment back just because, um, don't really feel that it's, it's maybe necessary. Um, we are currently paying for two leases, the old photocopier lease is not open until September, so you will notice that the old photocopiers lying around the council building somewhere, but that will go back in September when the lease is off. Um, and then Fran, I don't know if everybody knows Fran. Um, Fran, she comes here one day a week to, um, do the financing and payroll and that kind of thing. Um, she's, um, currently casual, um, she's going to continue working for us for as long as we need to, but obviously she's not, she's not going to be there forever. Um, but she has kindly agreed to do some training on the software that we use, providing we soft the, um, new town park and for the new admin system when they, when they come along. Um, yeah, finance again, just that we will be calling a finance and general planning meeting in September, so we can assess the financial situation. Um, NALC membership, so we are not currently members of NALC, um, which is the Nottingham Association, well, National Association for Local Councillors, but it's the same initials for the Nottinghamshire one. Um, I, I do think it'd be worthwhile thinking about joining. Um, I have put a letter that I received only today, um, from the, um, a lady at NALC, purely givings. Uh, she gave me some advice last week, advised us that we could actually continue with our meeting tonight without a car. So she was, she was kindly giving us some advice last week, because I'm not actually members. Um, it details in there the cost of joining, it is quite expensive. Um, obviously I didn't put this on the agenda for tonight because I didn't have the full details, um, when the agenda went out. So I would like, yeah, it is pretty expensive, so I would like, obviously, councillors to consider that, um, for the next meeting, um, as to whether we think that we should join, whether the benefits are worth it. Um, the next, the next thing I've got is vision and strategy. So currently, um, obviously our own statutory obligations to the allotments, um, which Tony is managing tremendously well, and I would like to thank, uh, thank him for that, particularly, um, for his work this month in ensuring the headlong UAB name is trimmed back. Um, he worked very hard to get that done and, um, he, he took a lot of, took a lot of grief off members of the public. Uh, so thanks to Tony for that. Um, but I, I feel that if we have got to offer value for money, you know, we have to offer value for money going forward, um, we need to begin to develop a vision for the town council going forward. Um, I feel at the minute there's not much direction, um, as to where we're going. Um, and I think it, it becomes very difficult to actually get somewhere when you don't actually know where it is you're going, if that makes sense. Um, so I have, um, yeah, so Theresa's already approached me with some information about the local council award scheme, uh, which is won by NALC, so that would be one of the advantages of joining, is that we will be able to, to go for that, um, award. And I think that that is, um, something that, again, that I would like councillors to think about over the summer break and have a look at the scheme, uh, so you're informed and we can discuss it properly in September. Um, I think it's certainly the place for us to start in terms of gaining some direction. Um, I will also be looking at the viability of using the localism act and the general powers of competence that that gives us. Um, I will be forwarding a link as well to you, um, I'll, I'll try and do that tonight, if not, it will be on Monday. Um, I will be forwarding a link to you, a handy, easy-to-read document which explains the ins and outs of the act. Um, it's, you can probably find it online if you, if you look anywhere, it's just a PDF, it might be handy for people to have a read through of that. Uh, but in the first instance, I was, I was thinking, and please comment on this and let me know what your thoughts are. Uh, but again, over the summer break, um, of sort of holding a consultation with councillors, um, rather than having meetings, because I know, you know, people all like a break, I was thinking more in, uh, terms of maybe just having, um, an online survey where councillors can submit comments, or we can look at them after the summer. Um, maybe in a working group or as a full council, you know, we'll have to, we'll have to think about how we're going to go about that. Um, because I think it's about looking at what we do already that's good. Um, and then we need to kind of prioritise the areas, you know, in order of what we need to resolve first, for any of the issues that we need to resolve first. I think the neighbourhood plan is obviously going to be a huge part of that, um, as well. So, um, yeah, so that's, that's out, and hopefully if people are kind of in agreement with doing that and are, are willing to engage over the summer, um, I would foresee that, um, we would be able to have the beginnings of a strategy ready for, um, with kind of the October, November full council meeting. Um, and then the last, a couple of things that kind of just tugged on to the end today quickly. Um, the annual Borough Parish Meeting was last night, uh, which I attended on, uh, with, uh, Richard, um, as Deputy Chair in the absence of Greg, and Simon Frostor who attended as well. Um, there will be a number of initiatives coming up at the Borough, which we can, uh, take advantage of as a town council, um, which I think should also be part of any strategy. Um, some of the things that were mentioned, it'll be grants, the community events, um, in particular for twenty-twenty. Uh, the Borough are keen to, um, give councils money for, um, VJ and VE Day anniversaries. Um, and, um, also events for young people, they seem to be quite keen on. Um, so we need to start, uh, thinking about ideas and we've got to those things. Um, there will also be, um, consultative workshops with the Borough, um, on the support they can give to town and parish councils. So I've obviously, um, put our name forward for that enthusiastically, uh, because I think it's something we will really benefit from. Um, one of the other things that was mentioned as well, um, within that was a voluntary code of conduct for town and parish councils, um, to sign up to. Um, so it's a kind of, I guess, so it's, it's, it's across the board for Borough and for town. I, I think that's a good idea. And then the last thing was, uh, just operation in order of reach, for those of you who don't know what that is. It's, um, the, uh, protocol that we'll just have in place for the, in the event that, um, Your Majesty passes away. Um, so just as a note, um, we'll be reviewing this procedure to check it's up to date with this year's instructions from the palace.
Okay, does anyone have any questions? Surely they're fine, if you do, yeah?
No, no, no.
Okay, David?
Yeah, um, thanks for that. Yeah, my concern is, I hope you're, my concern is, if we're going to employ a town carer, then we need to employ a fully qualified town carer. Yeah, is that the intention?
So, um, so on the person specification, by way of qualification, we asked us on the day that we're still qualified or would be willing to undertake qualification. I think we might be pushing our luck to find somebody that have actually got it. Um, but it is an requirement on the person specification that we must be willing to undertake it. Um, the full person specification is online, it's on the town council website, if anybody wants to look through it. I'm often happy for anybody to see email me questions about it. Um, but we, I think we're happy, um, quite strict at, at the HR Committee, I think, um, Bob and John and Richard disagree, it's, it's, it's not an easy set of requirements. Um.
Thank you, and Jan?
Can, can I just say, uh, as well, David? I was on the, the, the committee, the, the last committee to, uh, for a town carer. And they are extremely rare, extremely rare. So to have a fully qualified town carer certainly, and if they're still not suitable, they may, you know, they may be fully qualified, but they're not suitable. Um, so I think whatever it's done, she's, she's covered most of the bases and we will get the best possible person that we possibly can.
Jan, do you have anything?
Yeah, yeah, just, Alan, if you could, please, I can call your flower there, we'll get in trouble. If you could, could you, uh, give us a bit more information about that, because briefly looking at it, me personally have always spent some of that money in Stapleford, but if you could explain what kind of benefits it could be, it might,
Yeah.
It might sway the crowd, I, I don't think it that way, but as I look at it there, it not sway me, without being predetermined. And the other thing is, Grantford, I think that's fantastic, DJ and VE Day, we're all aware of what dates to fall and all that, and I think it might be better if we try like we did for Stapleford Remembers, form a group from within the town, um, not have all as cat hook as we did before, we had Stapleford Remembers and we moved on from there. And then we need to know what money's available to us, which we're asking about them and Steve and all that, so we know that there is something there, we can get from there. Because the two dates in particular, one, one has moved back on the ante.
Yeah.
It's now a Friday.
Yeah.
And VJ Day, if I remember, I forgot what topic we had, it's fifty, ten four.
Fifty, it's the fifteenth, spoken.
Fifteen, which I think is on Friday as well, right?
Yeah, and I think, and I think, um, the day is Friday the eighth of May.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I think, um, again, correct me if I'm wrong, it's now or Richard, but I think what Milan said last night was that it would be fifty percent of the cost that the Borough would, um, contribute, um, to these events, um, so I guess it's quite difficult. Um, with regard to the, um, NALC letter, I will get more information. I, I spoke to the lady nearly two weeks ago, and she's only kind of just done this information, it's literally called today. It's actually dated today, so I will, I will get further information from her, but obviously it, it will be kind of over the summer, but I'll, I'll get back to you in time for the next meeting.
Just a follow-up, Simon, I know we mentioned this last night at the meeting where we said the dates were, like you just said, Friday the eighth of May for VE Day, and Saturday the fifteenth of August for VJ Day, obviously. And I, I know Simon's quite interested in these, because as Catherine McGrath just said a minute ago, we, we did the umbrella thing, we say Remembers and whatever, and we mentioned it last night. It'd be nice to have the community groups, the, the, what's it called, the state for combined services and have the town council on side as well this time, all, all working together, because different groups can get different bits of money, so. The, the, the town council can apply for some funding, that could win them, but the combined services can, you know, obviously our own group as well. We can all get funded and put it all together, and it would be nice if we all worked together. I, I wouldn't, I'm going to say another meeting here, because I, I would like to do like what we did last time in twenty-fourteen. We had a, a meeting in Stapleford, and Simon came along, helped a lot of John was there. I know David helped and, and some of the others obviously weren't councillors and doing this thing then. But I'm sure this time around we can get even more input. So it would be good to do something for September, because Milan wants these things in yesterday, not tomorrow. And, and we'll all sit around the table and come up with some ideas and get all the results. And again, it'll be one of those things over time, can do a really lot of good stuff for the community, if, if everyone was happy with that. And Simon?
Just going on from what Richard said, the one thing that Milan was saying is there's lots of celebration for VE Day. VJ Day is almost a forgotten relative. It's something that me and Richard were talking about last night. I'm a member of the Royal British Legion Riders, and I can get some help from them, or something on with Richard, we were talking about putting something together. And one idea we floated, which I want to float with everybody, is wanting to have a reenactment group, which starts Second World War, and base something around the whole of that, so we've got a central whole, if you like. And we could all do something regarding the whole community with that, with the combined services, with the people in Stapleford, anybody. Like we, uh, did at, um, the two thousand and fourteen one, that was an incredible success. And if we can continue that and do that for VJ Day, uh, I think it would be wonderful. Theresa mentioned something as well. I know, but we've got to look at it. The one thorn in the tail of it, if you like, is it was strange to do it in the months. So we are looking at, there is, what is it called?
Peace cranes.
Uh, peace cranes. And it's something like that you can pretend, they do it in Japan, so write that, and I thought something like that, because we don't want another world war, world war too easy to face. And if we can keep going off with that and do something to bring about peace and get everybody working together, I think that'd be a brilliant idea. Richard Kelly's an absolute jockey with it, I think they're great for it. And I do think we can work together on this to get something really well. And people probably stay for the game, we've got fantastic people around this table, people watching us, and we've got fantastic people in Stapleford, we get working. And I think, working together, having a meeting as Richard says. That's a dirty word to name, it's probably. We get it together and we can do something, and yeah, as I say, it's next year, a little punchy time.
Are you on Els Aijons, Simon? Because I thought that's a lot more riding home.
No.
Um, the white.
I think they're a real.
No.
I think I thought they were, yeah, you know, they're biking, yeah.
No, the, the Rais is just a rugby bunch.
Oh, no. Just, just, we don't really all have to, so just on the back of that then, I, I was, it's a bit weird sitting here, because it was down there on the Sharpe and Four, I thought.
We're not doing that yet, so.
I've got a proper, I'm, I'm enjoying it actually. Uh, all I was going to suggest is, if I'm allowed to do this, tell me if I'm not, I, I was going to say, if people wanted to contact me and Simon over the summer holidays, if they've got any ideas or wanted to help out with this.
Yeah.
And then we can organise something after the summer holidays, you know, we could probably use your cow shed in the back of the car, we'll have time.
Don't forget souls, mate.
No, 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 that's the same.
They were involved a lot.
I don't want to, yeah, but if, if anyone's got any ideas, I'd tell us, you know, out there, or, or send an email or something. If anyone wants to get involved, message either myself or Simon and let us know, and then we can all do something together and that. You know, everyone's going to have some good ideas, but surely all, if that's okay with everybody around the table.
Right, I remember it well, the, you know, I was about ten at the time. And what they did was quite, they let all the pubs stay open to us, and then all the time, there was no closing pubs.
Three beers, wow.
And everybody went mad and cheered down as well, this was in London. But everybody went mad and cheered and danced in the streets and things like that, because the pubs did stay open. I thought we might have come out and gone.
Thank you, that's a good idea, but these aren't with pay.
Yeah, I think, um, that's great if you're going to do this for the summer, and I, I know everybody here hates committees because they all got rid of. Um, but I think, I, I, I do think that maybe, you know, we need, if, if we're going to make the best of this opportunity that we've got from the Borough, we need to have some kind of working group or committee, um, of the town council where decisions are made and ideas are, are kind of brought together. Um, so I don't know what everybody feels about doing that tonight.
Might be all, Alan, because we, we started off, didn't we, Richard, before, where, where there was, David was on it, I was on it, Richard were on it, Chris Rice and Russell were on it.
Simon, Al.
So, uh, uh, and we're all on it, and then all the councillors, again, were all excited. I, I'd prefer if it was a mix, you know what I mean, and leave it voluntary for a minute. But, but as long as there is some councillors there that can.
Yeah.
You know.
It's a working group in a city, it's a labour group, right, it's got something that's organised by.
Yeah, all we, yeah, all we.
It's overseen by the town council.
Yeah, overseen by, yeah.
It's open to anyone in the community to say, I think, hello. Especially because we've got to apply to Brockstow for some money, we want Stephen and others to tick the box and say we can have it. It, it does need to come eventually, you know, from the town council, I think, so an outside group couldn't apply, but we do, I'm sorry, but we do need these groups. So a working group isn't a council meeting, it is, it's a working group, it's overseen by the council. So I, I don't know, do we need to take a vote on that, see if that's, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
We've had that many votes now, we need to take a couple, don't we? So is everyone in support of, of, of what you're proposing before we vote?
That we set up a working group that is organised by the town council, but is open for the public to come and contribute.
So is, 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 is everyone in support of that idea? Anyone against? Any, up your, one against? Any abstaining? No, enough to pass then. Right, then thank you to, to that report, that would see, are we doing that much more?
Yeah.
Cool. All right, thank you. So next, we've got, act nine, co-option of the casual vacancy in Stapleford North Ward. Don't, no need to. Advice has been taken from Suwold and in actual sort of. Advice has been taken from Sue Rodden in electoral services across borough council on process. Consider the sample co-option policy and notice of casual vacancy for adoption to be used by Stapford Town Council. I think that was included with the agenda that I sent out, wasn't it?
Yeah, of course.
To give notice of intention to advertise the casual vacancy to the general public, with thanks to councillors Ringel and Cross for bringing this to the attention of the Labour. So it's up, I think that's back over to you, isn't it, yeah?
Yeah, so, so basically, yeah, thank you, Simon and David, for bringing this to my attention. Obviously, we have got a vacancy in Stapford North, and I know you submitted a motion to co-opt in the jar. Obviously, I had to clarify with the Borough what we have to do. And she kind of said to me that whilst there isn't a specific process that you have to follow, you do have to make it as fair and as transparent as possible. And she forwarded me a sample policy, which you should of course have in your email and hopefully Paul read. And really, what I just wanted to do tonight is kind of ask councillors to vote on whether we ought to adopt that policy for ourselves and obviously just adapt it. I've read through it, I think it all seems pretty reasonable and transparent. Obviously, it's been recommended by Sue Rodden, who, for anybody who doesn't know, is, I'm in short, she does an electoral services, she had a, had a, had an electoral services, but yeah, she's, obviously, you know, she's very experienced. There are a couple of things in there that maybe aren't quite relevant to us yet, for example, social, social media. But hopefully we will have social media go to form itself, propose that we leave that in. Does anybody have any comments?
David first. Oh, first of all, um, sorry, gentlemen. Yes, I was going to say, if, if it came to the side that the advertising and co-opting. But if it came to the side that don't want to do that way, then obviously it must be a by-election. It'll cost us ten for, for under ten grand, I'm just making people their choices.
Yeah, so I, just, I clarified that with Sue Rodden, and I'm happy to get that in mind for councillors. But I did ask Sue Rodden what would happen if we weren't able to agree on somebody to co-opt. And she said that because the seat had been vacant from an election, there wouldn't be a by-election. That they would only hold a by-election in the event of somebody choosing, opting to leave their seat. So there wouldn't be a by-election for Stapford North if we couldn't agree on somebody to co-opt. That's what Sue Rodden told me, I'll get it, I'll get it in mind in front of.
I mean, I've put my hand up like I'm down there, I'm, if, I'm, I'm just looking at the table, I'm not sure if everyone knows. I remember last time, I, I won a by-election in twenty fourteen, and people put, I think, I might be wrong here, I know Steve Carter probably not there, is, is it something like if, if ten people in that ward or in the whole town, I'm not sure which one, requested an election, then one gets called anyway, whether it's advertised or not. Yeah, I am right in saying that, so if, if ten people, and it could be any ten, I imagine, but not words.
I think what Sue was saying was because it's vacant from an election, that's the reason. So if somebody resigned for their seat, then it would, it would trigger a by-election, because it's been vacant from.
I mean, the cheque, I thought those.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Happy to do that, yeah.
Yeah, the, just to, just to sort of give some clarification on that from my own research, and to, and to support what, what Alan and Sue Rodden have said about it. The Local Government Act is quite clear about what happens if there becomes a vacant seat during a term. It's not very clear on what happens if there is a vacant seat because there were not enough candidates. So, and that's where, that's where the fuzzy area is. So I think, I think, I support the, I support the idea of actually advertising it, because, because then it's transparent. But I think that needs to be, that needs to be pretty short and sweet, because the reality is, there was an election, or there would have been an election held, if there were enough people interested anyway. So the, so the concept of, well, let's leave it, leave it open and for, for a long period of time and openly advertising. But if anybody was interested, they would have got their name out, and actually, one extra candidate on that ballot paper, they would have got through to that election as well. So, so I think it needs to be pretty short and sweet, but I do support the idea of it being advertised, that there needs to be an extra councillor. The, the submission of the notice of vacancy, I'm supporting principle, but I think it could do with being a little bit more council notice, less, you know, would you like to, and more like there is a, there is an official notice of vacancy that happens if somebody resigns their seat or doesn't turn up for six months. I would basically claim that, because then we want to be seen, not as, not as we are, we are advertising this like a billboard saying, oh, come on, come on, please, but to say, here is a vacancy, this is formal, we're a professional local government organisation, let's, let's put out a notice, proper and, proper and formal.
So you're talking about the actual notice?
The actual notice, yeah.
Not the draft document?
Yeah. The, the draft document, I pretty much support, I think it's, I think, I think that's going the right way.
Yeah, so I sent, I did send out a sample, and I did, I had sort of edited it so it was stapled, but that's the one that I got from Sue, the boss of the one out.
I think, I think it's good in principle, but it just needs revising. I think it's a bit too fluffy, I think it ought to look more like a, more like a council notice. And there is a, there is a notice of vacancy, there is official, an official government document that we could put out in this instance, that they would normally, that's the one that would normally be sent out for a ten days period, that lets the public know that there's a vacancy, so that they can choose to hold an election or not. I would use that same notice. Why, why, if it ever broke, don't fix it.
Okay, I mean, fair enough, but the one that I sent out is the one that Sue Rodden recommended, but yeah, the one that I think is better, I guess.
I'll, I'll send it to you.
Brought it on, I think I was kind of hoping that we wouldn't drag this out, and it would be, you know, run over the summer, so everyone would be happy. I think, you know, what do you want?
Sorry, Sue, Sue's next, what's it?
Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but probably we can continue, because we are caught, aren't we, without actually co-opting off, if we wanted to, if that is the other option.
Um, I think, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure from what Sue Rodden said, I think we're obliged to advertise it, but we're not obliged to actually co-opt somebody, you know, from the applicants. So we can leave it as vacant, but we do have to advertise it in that application.
Can I come back on that one as well?
Yeah, sorry, yeah, yeah, sorry, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, the, one thing that does say in the Local Government Act is that a vacancy that from a lack of candidates in an election should be filled as early as practicable. Now, that is a very fluffy term, we could, we could say as a council, it's not practicable to fill that vacancy for four years, but I think we'd have to have solid reasons for that, otherwise we'd leave ourselves liable to, to anybody complaining about, from Stapford North particularly, about being underrepresented. It was decided by an authority much higher than us that Stapford North needed six town councillors, and I don't think it's up to us to say, oh, well, we don't think that's right, we think it was one of five, so.
Maggie, so, but John's on it.
Probably Maggie will be on, uh. No, I mean, yes, I do think it's right, and we should do it, but I'm sure between us now, we're trying to get down this non-political line as we're all town councillors, or whatever we are, we are borough councillors as well. Lots of county councillors now. Right, but they're all in. But I think, I think surely between us, that the, the three leaders, or, we could decide something, like advertising it as well, if no one comes forward, I'm sure that we can decide what, which way you want to do. We've got the deputy leader now, we've got the leader, so let's, because as David says, we don't want to be putting eight thousand into a park, when that could be very useful to Stapford. And surely, there must be someone out there that we all know that might be interested in sitting there and listening to the John and Richard show or whatever, yeah. So if you're all in favour of that, I'm sure advertising it, see what we're hoping, not sit down and talk like men and women. They're on with.
Simon, do you have a hand though?
Yeah, I do. I was basically listening to what John said, and I agree with what he said on heart of it. Is it worth putting to a vote to see whether we go for the putting it out for adverts, or we go for co-opting? I'm running on that. As we said, we're all here for the good of Stapford. It's just an idea, it's just something you have out, and put it out with it.
It has to be advertised, I'll just say the power to me.
Basically, what, just, just to clarify what we're doing is we're advertising the casual vacancy, people to reply to be co-opted.
I don't, I don't answer that.
Can we do it, the way we put the hands up?
No, nothing to add. I was going to say the same, I was going to say that's fine.
Did you want to add some stuff down that end?
I was just saying, it's up to us, if we have somebody to let them know, to get to the risk.
Yeah, is anybody actually, is, is anybody proposing something here that we vote on, or?
Yeah, so, so.
All right, John's got his hands up.
Hello, is there any speculation that it has to be advertised?
Um, it's, well, it's, it's in the policy, the draft policy, which is what I'm hoping to vote on tonight. It doesn't specify a specific time in it, although I have just written ten days on my, on my copy, so I guess, I guess that would be something that we'd try there. But it's, it's really, it's just a notice to the general public, that has to go on the website and the notice boards.
So it's just like on the official council side, and I'm in the board.
And it does say on your Facebook page as well, but at the moment we haven't, haven't got one.
Well, if you're in the summer holidays, it's ten days for the summer holidays enough, because a lot of people are going to be on holidays that might be interested, I don't know, they might be sad.
Yeah, we just can't keep saying it's not on holiday, just get on.
I know that, I know we've got to get on with things, I know, it's just a thought.
And I just proved that we advertise, propose that we advertise it.
I was just going to say I support ten days, if we set a policy on this, I support ten days. Because if it was a vacancy that happened midterm, ten days would be the notice period to the public for them to call an election or not. So ten days already has, albeit not those precise circumstances, but it already has a place in law. So we might as well stick as close to that as we can to fill in the fluffy areas, so.
Yes, I would probably agree with that, ten days is enough.
Is that what we're voting on there?
Yeah, so probably, so I think I need to vote if we're going to go with this co-option policy sample, which will be adapted for Stapford, and more have the specific words to be advertised for ten days.
So everyone's had the fluffy that I sent out then, so I'm assuming you've all read it, that's what we're voting on then. So everybody that's in support of the documents you've been sent, being used, including the ten days, which you've all just said you kind of agree on, who's in support of all of that? Oh, that's everybody, that unanimous. Anybody against? And anybody abstaining then?
And I would say, I'm only opposed that we vote on whether we actually advertise it, which we have got to ignore, but I suppose we should take a vote, that we should advertise it as soon as is possible.
So it's from, ten days from Monday, were they?
Uh, not necessarily from Monday, as soon as it's, it'll probably be more like a week on Monday. So I'm trying to plan, we've got a head at the moment.
Okay, so you start, everyone who's in support of that.
I'll say it, and we're going to vote.
Anyone against? And any abstentions? Right, thank you. Next item. Item ten, Mayor, that's it, Mayor Handbook and Mayor Invitations. Ray should have been reading this, submitted by councillor Richard McCray as a passing deputy mayor to consider documents written by councillor McCray and to note current document for citizen, a briefing guide for prospective mayors produced by the Local Government Management Board dated nineteen ninety seven. So obviously, that, it's got my name on it, but basically, Bob helped as well, and I think he used his experience as a past mayor, so we tweaked it a little bit. I'm, I know we sent something out, it came out of the agenda, didn't it? But we dotted a few i's and crossed a few t's, and Bob added a few little bits to it, which got sent out today. It wasn't a lot of difference, and I printed it out here if anyone wanted to really get some, ten days as well. But I just thought, we didn't have anything that said what the mayors can do and can't do, and what they should do and shouldn't do. And I thought it was important, not, not just for people that's involved now, but as we move forward, just have some basic guidelines and etiquette and all that kind of stuff. And the other document that's with it, there is two documents, isn't there, the mayor's handbook, and the invite was basically something to put on the website, so people that want to invite the mayor along to an event, it just gives them some guidelines, you know, to approach the mayors, and there's all kinds of stuff like that. So hopefully you've all read that, Bob. I guess we're open to questions really, don't we? David?
Yeah, that we may, I think, I read it, I sent it to me, and it looks, it's really, really good. I would suggest, if I may, to you, that, I'm sure everyone hasn't read it yet, and if they wanted to make a few adjustments or put something in about it, that they've got the whole wall to do, so I'm bringing it back in September.
I'm actually, obviously, everyone else says, yeah. Um, Bob?
The only thing we noticed, really, just slightly, areas have been, is, is think, there's three things. Mayor's consorts, which is, we don't have here, we don't, we don't, we don't, on the, on the general meetings, like other, like other parties, because they're not part places, as Richard said, possibly single, that's all divorced, or we don't, that's a bit of picking the teeth, it's a bit, it's a bit, and we've also been, as well. And just wanted to update that, so we made the LGBT, because it wasn't a nice, nice, certain, didn't think of these things so much. A little bit more clear on this one, is to extend that to the console. Nobody should be surprised nowadays, if you're to level the same sex consorts, or something, with a different colour, but we just want us to be supposed, as a councillor, to be open and say, yeah, we support that, put it in writing. And to expect the console to behave the same as the mayor, that, that thing, that they represent in Stapford North. We, the same.
Is that why I have to remember that?
I thought I'd done that. The other one is remuneration. I was talking to a couple of mayors who are actually quite lucky here, and those of you who don't know, actually the mayor gets a stipend each year, which is not, no questions asked, you just hand over some money. And one mayor was very shocked that we have that, since he's had to put in written expenses each month, to put in to make it look transparent, because else what are you doing with the money? And I think, really, I don't want any accusations of any of us saying what happened there. However, putting in that, that each month is going to be, it's just more limited, so we shouldn't, the only thing that matters is we should be clear that stipend is given, and what it should be used for. After all, that's all anything that we were thinking, so let's have a think about that over the next, the council.
I think what David said would be good then, so everyone ought to have a read of it, more over the summer. Have a read of it over the summer, and then if we put it on, it's going to take a few minutes until the next meeting, we bring it back, and we can just, you know, make, yeah, well, hey, it can't wait, if that is, I suppose we need to vote on that one now, don't we? Everyone in support of doing that, oh, sorry, David?
Well, we're, we're saying that I'm going back in September.
Yeah, so go to it. Go to it then. Go to it then. So is everyone all right, she comes back in September then, yeah? Yeah, okay, so. Oh, you are, okay. Okay, thank you everybody. I didn't realise to myself, I did a lot of put the baster, I'm not the tech credit someone, you know. Right, I have to weigh that then. Memorial Bench, councillor Chris Rice, and this was like, well, something I should do. I just, I just thought it would be something nice to do as a town councillor. We've actually got a location that, that's come up in the past few days. His, his family actually asked me to do this, he wanted something out, I come up there, and I says I'd put it on the agenda for them. But if they do support it, and I just thought it would have been nice if the town council could do something, obviously, you guys, if I was up there, I'd be coming up with things. But we've got a couple of locations, and what, one of them is outside the planters, outside Larry's bar, because then two benches have got to come out, they need replacing, and it would, it's a nice place, you know, you could put a bench there. I don't know, the one is in the town square that really need replacing at the minute.
Where's the second one? Where's the second bench?
No, that's, well, it would have been the town square, but they don't need to be replaced at the minute, so it's like, it kind of kills two birds with one stone, if that's what you say. But yeah, anyone have any questions on that one?
I agree with you, I think we should do something for it. He was well known in the area, and he was a well liked.
David and John actually.
Can I, can I make everybody aware that I totally agree with having a bank for our left hand to Chris Rice? But when, and councillor McGrath will remember this, when the late old man, Tom Martin passed away, this particular subject came up a cancel. And under the guidelines of the one before Pampar, informed us that the town council did not put any money towards it. So, obviously, I remember speaking to John about it and we got the, I went to the core group and we, we got all the money for it, and we got the county council to put it into nothing, didn't we? And Brock still supported us, didn't he? Um, on, um, the work and things. Um, so the reason that the council cannot put money into this, and I'm only going by what happened, do you know? That's, is that not everybody, it, it comes out of council tax, right, on the money that we have here. And obviously, not everybody's gonna be happy about, unfortunately, putting a bank with some certain person's name on it. Um, I think there is a legal thing here. Now, I'm only going by the old town clerk, right? So I would like to see a bank, obviously, and, and last time we got Tom one, and it's still there, uh, by the library, if you know John. Because you use it every day, so you will cost it, don't you? And, and, um, I'm hoping, maybe things have changed since then, but I do not know. And I wouldn't want to get this council into any trouble.
So what, what if we were to, then we, we need to look at the legal implications, just in case that is right, I, I don't know. And, and if it, if it is, like, if that is the case, then obviously we'll look at something different, can't we, when it's on the books, right? But I, I know John was that.
Well, I don't think, David's right, yeah, we, we did get some money off the core group. I don't think, hey, it could be a problem. But like you said, if you find out the legal implications, right, and, and just go up there, and ask Kath where she obviously wants it, I'm not. We're making a run in the booze and, and we're out, and I shouldn't probably say this, the reputation of the pub on the corner, right? But my, and my pub's no better, so I'm not, I don't, I'm not like that, right? But I, I think we need to ask Kath where she might like it, which, again, she might like it, I don't know, Fairfield, as we call it. But you're right, them two benches are not very good, right? So perhaps, uh, some of us county councillors, ones at the back now, could probably have a word, because we never see the others, right? But then we could get them benches replaced as well, but ask Kath when we find out the legal, legal implications where, where she wants it. And I'm sure Tim Crawford would give us a bench without anyone, because he has done it before, and he did it with that one as well.
Tim, what's that?
Pretty much, um, pretty much the same thing that, uh, John just said to, to end. Um, Chris Rice, uh, was widely respected, uh, memorial bench, I think we're, I think we're all in, probably gonna be in favour of. Um, but, but bear in mind, the town council has very little cash, and Chris was also a borough councillor, and the borough has much cash. So if we can, uh, get them to pay for it, that would be brilliant.
Thank you, John, thanks.
Uh, just, just very quickly, obviously, you said that the, the council and some strange kind of words. I'm just wondering, um, we, you know, when that was, and maybe check the minutes and see what the advice actually was, just to, just to start in point.
Well, the truth, the, the problem is that when you took the minutes from what the town clerk, the other town clerk wrote, um, we had many arguments about it, and it wasn't even on the minutes. Um, but, um, I've gotta be honest about it, the, the, the year, I can have a look tonight, when, the year was on the plaque.
Okay.
Or plaque, or whatever you wanna call it, um, so, so we'll have a look back and look as I can remember.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
John?
Yeah, right.
For the handball?
I'm very much in favour of this. We all, we all respect it, Chris, and he fought a very lively and battle, yeah. My only concern is the location, and I am going to see Kath very shortly, because I have something for her. So if you like, I'll run and pass Kath where she would actually like it to be located. But whatever happens, I think we should do something in his memory. And I'm not bothered about the money side of things. I think we could raise that and say that he was well liked and well respected. And he was one of the founding members of this town council, and I think he must have felt that.
Look, I was just gonna say, let me ask you, because it was his daughter's son that asked me. Let me ask him first, because I don't know if they told them all. I'm, I'm not saying that, I'm, I'm one to ask. Yeah, I'll ask him tonight, and then I'll let you know.
Yeah, well, let me know.
Yeah, I'll let you know just.
I'm going to see Kath next week, we have to be there, she must be involved, so.
Yeah, I didn't wanna just ask her in case they threw you as a surprise, don't we? I'll ask, I'll ask the son in all, and then I'll ask you.
But I think, I mean, if there's a, if there's a different path, because like you said, it wasn't, uh, a trap that dragged them off, was it?
No, I didn't say we crossed much, because I would have put him on public, being conservative, but never mind.
So, so what, so what we're saying is then, we, we do as a council, support the idea of a bank. Location to be discussed with the family, and, and look into the legal implications. But I'm sure we've got county councillors, I know this is on Saturday, and sometimes they have a bit of division for them, perhaps that's what we can look into. So I don't know if they have to be in the area or not, I don't know, but, and, and we can also approach the borough as well, can't we, and ask them? And I, I, I'm sure between us, it's about a thousand pounds, it might be eleven hundred quid at the most. Um, they're not the cheapest things in the world, because you want the nice one that's gonna last. If, if you say about a grand, you're not far off, and, and I'm sure we, we can raise that in a heartbeat, once we start a fund raising, go ahead. You, you know, so. What, David, you got?
We did last time, uh, that the mayor, we, we, we got round very quickly, didn't we, in the first one, like, um.
Okay, thank you, David. Joe?
Uh, this is a complaint against you. I do get annoyed when somebody puts their hand up and wants to speak, and then somebody comes in, in the middle of it, when she's speaking, and it's not right. You should wait till she's finished her speaking and then go to the other person. I'm sorry about that, but it annoys me intensely.
No, just, yeah, like James says, just wait till, I'm, I'm a listener, I write down and just put the hands up, so just let, finish speaking before I know it's, it's down to the speaker, that's okay. So yes, everyone's in support of that, then I'll think, you know, with, with things we've just said, and John.
Richard, someone's just whispered in my ear that the borough.
Yeah, so we can, we can tap the ball up as well, can't we?
But, I mean, let's.
Yeah, but, so in principle, we support it as a town council. Yeah, so, yeah, so that's, I don't think it's all we need to vote on, isn't it? We just, we support, isn't it? So thank you for that. All right, item 12, a good councillor's guy, submitted, oh, listen, you're just mentioning that. The good councillor's guy submitted by Tuesday, um, to make the document in preparation for the meeting since September 2019. Um, is that, okay.
It's, uh, yeah, sorry, Ella covered most of this, I was just gonna say, um, I was gonna highlight a bit in the back of this, if you haven't come up with it. There is a toolkit, which is a list of documents which we're supposed to have, uh, because I know Ella's been working on the, uh, HR side of it. There's a lot of finance stuff as well, which as a new councillor, I'd like to know some of these things. Um, and I've got a list of everything that should be there, um, maybe just kind of a, can we have a look in, in the future and get those documents together so that we can use it? Because it is a toolkit and it is useful for having it to handle and doing.
It's a very good document, and thank you for sending it, putting the link on the agenda. I, I've got some paper copies, if I've got it for a mile, by soft, whatever, I know, I only brought one down tonight. I've got a few more, I can't remember how many I've got, but I'll try and get them down. I actually asked the company if they'll give me some more, but they're about five pound each and then seven quid posted, which is ridiculous. Well, I did surround some when I was at the meeting, so I can, I'll try and get some more, and then if I do, I'll make sure we've got one each, so, so, so thank you for that. Um, right, so I suppose that's noted then, and, uh, thank you. All right, item 13, local improvement scheme. Ooh, it's me again. Item submitted for discussion by me. So there, there was a link in there, what it was, I, I became aware that the ca, was it county, it goes, yeah, the county. The county is setting up the local improvement scheme again, and where we, we can apply for funding for various projects throughout Stapleford. And I just thought, because it doesn't start until, I think it's in September, so it's a bit more over, over the summer holidays. It was basically, if everyone wants to have a look on that, what, what we did last time round, I know, I know there was quite a few councillors sat around the table that, that came, and we discussed this at the, was it the local plan meeting, the, the traffic transport? I can't remember, we, we discussed it at the local meeting, and what, what we did a few years ago, we did a thing called Your Stapleford, Your Ideas? I think that's what the title, didn't we? And, and we did three different events, and I, I think we did one at Pastory Church, we did something up at Montrouge Court, and then we did something here, and, and we put all maps up and we got people to chuck ideas in and everything. And then we, we've got all these ideas and plans and everything, we put it together, and now, and we sent them over to our county councillors, because I, I think if I'm right, it has to be supported by the county councillors for that area, i- i- in, in these schemes. Um, and, and then obviously they put them forward. So we said, if we did all the work, it was some cracking ideas and that. I don't, I don't know where copies are at when, I, I haven't got them, I know we submitted it, it's nice, but it's on the system to dig it all out together. But it don't matter about the past, it's gone, hasn't it? So I just thought if everyone had a look at this and come up with some ideas, it, it is something that we need to bring back, because if we don't ask, we don't get. And, and I think we need to think really big on it as well, instead of just thinking for small things, we need to go a bit time on it, see what we can all come up with between us, so that, that was what that was, and I know, uh, Bob had his hand up first.
No, proceeding on, the legal plan last time, we, we went round playdays and the carnival, that's the, the event. So we basically two birds with one stone, and the other asked what they think, and we didn't see if we get ideas or not.
A bit late for playdays, I think.
Oh, we didn't know.
Playdays, I agree, and we haven't got a stake in carnival this year, no, because we haven't, so, but we've got one next year, actually. So Maggie, did you, John?
Yeah, well, I'm Maggie, massive. If you know, Richard, I think David, me, you, some of the other councillors, that's all I've got, you're on board, all right? Um, had walked up and down the town, didn't we, went through this, went through that, made this, made that, and thanked Stan and Jackie, who eventually signed it off, but then didn't refine, but the money went to something else, if you remember correctly, right? The money went somewhere else. So first of all, we need this. Secondly, we need to know if we need our county councillors backing, without getting too political again, right? And then we need to get somebody, because it was Stan and Jackie, it was last time, remember the time before me, we filled it in wrong, so we missed that one. Then we filled it in, right, and someone else did, it was, went somewhere else. So we need to know who's gonna fill it in for us, as we found out for TruSlam, when we fill things in, right? We need to know how we fill it in, who fills it in for us, and will, and who we need the county councillors backing. Otherwise, without me saying it, we, we, we're growing against the wind here.
If, if, if I'm right, we, we can ask Steve after the meeting, because it's probably the con, you know how it works. Um, I'm sure the county councillors have somebody, is his name David? I can't remember his name. He's really good at funding and he, he kinda does all that, and perhaps it's worth inviting him here, because he can tell us all them answers, instead of us all trying to guess and we don't know what we're doing. He, he's the expert, I can't remember his name, we, we can ask Steve afterwards and I'm sure he'll tell us if, if he's, if he's able to find that.
We'll give it Ella and.
Yeah, but, but we need to find out who it was, and I thought if I had to come along to a meeting, because it does start in September, we need to crack on, because otherwise we'll miss out. And I thought, well, if we, if we speak to here, we know it's coming up, instead of waiting till September, it's on October, November. But we, we do, oh, it might be near actually, I can't even remember. But if we invite him to come along, even if it's just to give us some advice, or if you need to just make a phone call to him or something, he'll tell us who we need, what we need to do, and he'll support us, because the county council want you to do this. And, you know, it is what it is, isn't it? I just thought it's with our best. So is anyone else have any questions on that one? So does, does everyone think it's something that's, that's worth doing, yeah? So do we need to vote on that, just to see if we've got support from the council, I suppose? Yeah, everyone who supports that? We will get some money in Stapleford, don't we, not gonna? All right, thank you. So that's it. Item 14, motion to phase out the new zero hour contracts, it's linked to the town council. It goes by Sue Baterson, seconded by Keller, Urb Councillor, Ella Pinnan. So I suppose I'll send it to you again.
Yeah, I think, um, at the last meeting, well, we're all quite shocked that we then put big one zero hours contracts. I think when that came out, I think everybody was shaking their head, so I thought, first we are employing again, um, but it might be a good time to say that we're gonna just call zero hour contracts. Um, I think treat staff as temporary, they treat the job as temporary, and we are better off at the same rate, with regular hours and putting trust in them and training, that so if the time clock is off, that we've got somebody that we can have there to take over the role, rather than sweating around somebody doing a couple of hours here and a couple of hours there. I think we should treat staff with respect in return, now we got the job with respect.
There is a copy of the motion in your, in your little agenda map. I'll read it if you want to.
Yeah, if you want to read it now, that Emma went to it, I was looking at my voice, this and that.
Would you like us to read it, um, before, before we carry on, I think?
Yes, I can.
Does everyone want to read it out, or, or did you all read it in your agenda as a matter of fact?
Um, I think we can discuss it, but we can't pass it, can we? We can't do anything about stopping it. We can discuss the motion, but we can't do anything about it. So why should we, you know, talk about it now?
So do you want, do you want to come back on that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I think, I think, obviously we can't, we can't make them illegal, but we can make a policy for the town council that we choose, the town council wants to employ people on zero hours contracts. I think that's, that's what we're voting on.
Does that help you? Bob?
Yeah, I'm just gonna speak up slightly, I'm just gonna speak up slightly for zero hour contracts, don't, I'm not, I'm not responsible to that. And when that happened, there, so it's a, a property, the, uh, the good, the good side to it, I mean, when Jackie and I had twins, it was a bit of a surprise. But I'm, it, both of us being on nursing wards, we couldn't afford childcare for two kids, but luckily we had employers that allowed us to, to work part-time. But not only were employers alive at the time, they're saying, you work for us full time, you shut off. That puts a lot of people into a precarious position where they have no work experience, and for those of you who are interview people, you know when someone's in front of you where they're not working, recent work experience or not. I've got in mind someone who say, um, male or female, who's got their kids, say, at school, and would love to work the middle of the day and be flexible with the, the child as sick one. So zero hours, yeah, let's get rid of that bit, but let's keep the flex part of it there, so maybe, maybe you can.
Tim, sorry, Tim?
Um, it's not just, uh, zero hours contracts that I mentioned in this motion, it also talks about salary. Now, obviously, we, uh, we can't, uh, the way this, the way this is, unless we choose to exclude the public, uh, we can't really discuss the impact on salaries, but I don't think, at the moment, despite the fact that I'm sure that, that everybody in this room is in, is in support of treating staff with dignity and, and making sure that, that a fair wage pay is rewarded for a fair wage work. Um, I think that we're also voting on a financial motion, because it, because it proposes, um, a, a wage, um, a, a minimum, a minimum wage on, on this. Uh, but I don't know the council finances, and, and I wouldn't feel comfortable voting for this motion that will have a financial impact on the council without having an impact assessment on the finances of the council done first.
John?
Well, I disagree with you there, Tim, because I pay the real living wage to my staff, and I do that because that's what you're supposed to do.
Yes.
Right, and yes, it does have a financial impact on me, but I'm employing them girls, sorry, ladies and gentlemen, to do a job. So for me, as an employer, right, I do pay regardless. I also pay them holiday money, I also pay them this, that and the other. So, uh, is it a financial, oh, I mean, I dare say the council is, I, I'm, I'm allowing to finance anyway, but I dare say it's got a bit more in bag than me. So I, I disagree with that, because after all, the, the start on the ways it should be, and then you might be able to balance, balance your finances better, then you know what you're doing. You might be able to, you ain't got this zero hour contract, but we've got eight hours, a nine pound, whatever, a year and a week, that's me, oh.
Um, just to come back on that, just to clarify, I thought you see, um, so you do know, we do already pay really good wage. Um, and there are a set number of hours for each, um, for each category staffs. There are 20 hours for, uh, town clerk, there are 20 hours for admin, there are 20 hours for, um, caretaking and cleaning. Um, so I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, we're not proposing that we would ever go over that without that coming to council. Um, and I don't, and I understand your concern, but just to come back, that the financial impact of this motion, it, it, what we, what we want that isn't already there, that makes sense.
Right, thanks a lot, that, that, that clarifies it. If there's, if there is zero impact and this is about setting a policy moving forward that isn't going to affect the, the flavour of today, and, and, because my, my only, my only concern is. And, because my, my only, my only concern is that this isn't our money, this is, this is residents' money. And so, but if it's not going to cost the town council any more money, then, then the town council's currently running costs, then I don't think we need an impact assessment, so I, I'll take that back, thank you.
And just to say, I think we should be leading the way as a town council, as employers, we should be leading the way. So what I think is, in the area, we're setting a standard which we are, we're just going to follow.
Well, I, I, you're onto the question, and I'm sure there's a certain risk that we have to pay on anyway, in any other board, but, yeah. I might support the motion, but keep some flexibility for people, but again, offering something good for people, so. Simon?
Yeah, I was just kind of tagging on to what Robbie says, I think flexi-hours is something we need to look at. I give you a refriery when I used to be in Lourdes, I was in, is that the area? You don't know, work for one agent, you can go to another one, and all of them pit those up. That's the bonus of zero contracts, there are many pitfalls and minuses, and we're not even going to, we all know them. But flexible contracts, especially for youngsters who've got young kids, I think is a must, and it's something we, as we should be doing with the hourly wage, we should lead by exactly.
John, can you answer?
Yeah, I'll scratch the heads, sorry.
Just a quick, quick repentance.
Yeah, just to pull that aside, well, I, I do a really long flexi, I think actually we have a legal requirement as an employer to give people the right to apply for flexible working hours. We're not obliged to agree to that, if, if it's kind of affects the way that we do business. However, one of the things that we did just through our HR committee was put in a, a flexible working on the same place. You will get the four bits of the HR committee, and they're going to approve after the next meeting, which is, I think it's in September, I can't remember off the top of my head. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, and that will kind of determine if we're supposed to go back, what that is, that is in the part of that.
Is there anyone else who has any questions before we vote on the motion? So we've got a motion by Sue, and seconded by Ella, as you can see, all in support, please. Any against, any abstentions? Can Bill Almiss for four years, please, it's quite a long. No, this is, I'm looking at it. Mayor's engagement is item fifteen, obviously Ray, Ray's not here to do this, but he's, I don't know who he is.
Germany.
Sorry, but we've got, yeah, I know, I know he's been to lots of events, and, you know, I'm sure like myself, you all know what cracking Ray, uh, Mayor Ray is, he loves being out and doing something that creates and supporting people. He, he has been to a lot of events, and it's nice that he's out there to see all the people. I've, I've been to a few of them with him, and I've, I've had a ball, it's been fun. There's some cracking groups out there doing some good stuff in the community. And I was just going to say, if anybody knows any groups that they've got the mayor to go to, then message or, or let the office staff know here, and they, they can sort it out, whilst the, the individual groups need to contact themselves. There's no way of contacting the mayor or myself and saying, can you come, it don't work like that, that it's all got to be done proper. So obviously, I'm, I'm not speaking for Ray, but obviously, I know, I know he's enjoyed himself, so just keep inviting him to King's Hill, is it? And I think that's it, really, obviously, next week you've got Play Days, so everyone's welcome to that, that's twelve o'clock to four o'clock, Kilmarnock, St Mirren, Cretish Ground. And it's nearing three, there's a few little people on, they have to pay to sport, but yeah, go along and shoot places and enjoy it, so I think I'll sit on that one, really. Oh, yeah, so Saturday the seventeenth of August, we've got the St Fyddan District Annual Garden Show, which is at Covent Club, next to Iceland, if you don't know. The mayor's attending that, that's half past three to five o'clock, and the mayor will be opening it, and doing the prizes and everything. I know, when Bob did, he'll be here, I went to one as well, and it's a good event, I think, definitely worth going along.
Can I just make it aware that they normally start a bit earlier than what they advertised, especially when the mayor comes?
We're sure he knows that, then, thank you for that, Sue.
Yeah, it's, if you know, I've been taking photographs where Ray goes as the town mayor, I just want to say. Yeah, I just want to say that everybody can use those photographs to publicise the town council, as a town council, but not particularly, if that makes sense. So I'm quieting for everybody to use the photographs, they're not just me.
And thank you, thank you for going along with him and taking us.
It's like with a display in the, in the room, it's about publicising and trying to get people to engage with the town council, not.
All yours, Sir, on the garden show, I don't think we would have needed for judging anymore, you start to do that about nine more.
Ella?
Just really quick, actually, they, there's been an email since the agenda went out, from the, it's the garden horse. Yeah, the garden horse association, asking us if we can donate a rattle prize. Apparently we do normally do this. Is everybody happy if I investigate that and kind of validate something akin to what we've done in the past? I can't really say what exactly it would be, because this is the first time I've explored that, but.
Thank you, Mark.
No, actually, I thought we did, I thought we gave some sort of shield or something. I could be wrong, I knew we did give something. Well, let me put it this way, can I make a suggestion? That if we don't have anything that we normally would wish to have, then maybe I suggest that we, if we elect to donate a block or something, to the town council.
Say a rattle prize or a war?
Yeah, well, a rattle prize, but I don't, that's what I'd like to do as well, so.
Simon?
Can you fix for a war, the thoughts have just come over to me? That's the case, I've just been talking about Chris Rice, the way councillor, what's about making Chris Rice a award that can be used for something for the whole Stapleford?
I'd have to be fond of it first, like.
It's just an idea about, right? I don't know about the prizes, because this is my first year.
Sorry, isn't it, I think we might, should have one, we've got a Chris Rice Award on the garden competition, we've got one already. Yeah, so, yeah, well remembered. John?
If you're, it's all right, Tim, if you're arguing about giving a prize, you know, tell them to give me a ring, I'll give them a bocca or something.
Could I ring you as well?
No. No, because you're normally getting on for no.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, I think, I think whatever, whatever precedents has been sent in for, just to, just follow through. I think it's not going to, it's not a breakback, is it, Mike?
That's right, that's what I meant.
So is, is everyone okay with that, then, that we look into what we've done in the past, and, yeah, all right, then? Okay, next, we've got on here, planning update. Obviously, I, just before, obviously I have a planning committee, obviously, so I can't discuss any plans or anything like that. I was, all, all I wanted to say was, because there is new councillors around the table, if, if anyone does approach you with a planning application, you can contact one of the borough councillors, and ask for it to be called to committee, because I spoke to someone about this the other day, because I wasn't sure what the protocol was. So, yeah, keep, keep an eye on the lists that the council do send out, if you've not signed up for them, you can sign up for it on the borough council website, and you'll get the list sent every Friday, we just had them sent out today. And if there is anything on there that anyone's contacted you about, or you've got comments or concerns about, you can bring it to the town council, as long as it's within the town, and you can all speak about it around this table. And as a town council, they can send comments to the borough, but just saying individuals can, but you, you can request that. You can also request that they go to committees at Rockstar, and I think I'm all right saying that, because I've not spoken about an actual plan, so. I don't know what's on the actual page, because there's no plans on here, because nor, normally we put them on this thing, so we know what we're talking about, and you could have already read them, so. I guess that's over to you, that one.
Yeah, really, I just, one of the things obviously is the standard agenda item, I think it's a very concrete today. So I really just put them on there, for people to know, I think there's only one coming for St Fyddan, which is St Fyddan North. I think they're, or I think they've already been determined, so the two can stay, for example, it's a bit one fuse and one condition of permission.
John?
Look, you just, and again, the new councillors, you've got to contact the ward councillor for the area. So, you know, it's all, it's like, Tim, he's, Jan, Richard North, staff, Wes, me and Ray's all here. Right, so you understand what I'm saying? And then they'll call it to the planning committee, and you also have the right to speak as well. Okay, so do you understand what we're saying, yeah? I'll call you, but then you all know it.
It's, it's new stuff that we'll need to do, isn't it, do you know what I mean? Because if, if you want to ask anybody, that's in the meeting, someone who is one of the councillors, is that all right on that one, with? Here at the end, seventeen, right, date to the next meeting, sixth of September, seven o'clock. Can you make sure we're actually in here, for when it does start at seven, though, not seven, start on the beginning? It's supposed to start by on time, and it's nice, because I like to go home and get some chips. So, yeah, thank you, everybody, I quite enjoyed that, so that's closer meeting at nine oh.